I call to order the April 19 special meeting of the Iowa City Board of Adjustment. May we have roll call?
Carlson.
Here.
Parker Russo.
Here.
Swigard.
Here.
Weitzel, in placement of Baker.
Although there are only three of us here, that's enough to field a quorum and so we will hear the rest of the hearing tonight and the three of us will vote on it. At this time, can we start where we ended last time with the gentleman who is speaking, who asked for a delay?
Can you please remind me where you were in your presentation?
I'm sorry?
Can you please remind me where you were in your presentation?
I was at the very beginning of it.
This part?
Yeah.
Or I'll just start here?
Yes.
Could you give us your name again?
Sir.
And can the audience hear on the speakers okay? Okay, great.
Good afternoon again. My name is Greg Gertis. I'm a lawyer representing Mr. Dave Moore and some other Northside residents in connection with this matter. Couple of points that I'd like to cover this afternoon. The first is what exactly in reality are we talking about? And I provided you a handout last week and I'd like you to turn to page two of four of that. It looks for plans for the proposed project. Now, the city code specifically states that you can't have staircases that serve the front or main entrance of a home that protrudes into the required setback. So the issue becomes, is this the main entrance to the house that we're talking about? And the city says, no, it's not the main entrance. The main entrance is around the corner and there's a door that enters into the south side of the residence from the alley. Now, there's an old cliche that goes something to the effect that if it walks like a duck and quacks like a duck and flies like a duck, that it's a duck. And this is the main entrance that looks like a main entrance and serves like a main entrance and really is the main entrance regardless of the label that the city staff has chosen to put on yet. Now, why is that? Let's look at the middle floor plan on that exhibit. This isn't prepared by us, this is prepared by the applicant. And when you enter into that front door, what you see is a room listed as a foyer, or if you're like, unlike me and didn't grow up on a hog farm, maybe it's foyer, however you choose to pronounce it. The other thing is that you see a nice little coat closet for your guests who have entered your new home to hang their clothing. I was curious as to what exactly the definition of a foyer is, so I stopped at the library on my way over here. According to Webster's Third New International Dictionary Dictionary, a foyer is an entrance hallway or vestibule, an entrance hallway. Now, let's compare this front door with the side door that they propose. And you see that over on, just to the left on the same page, the side door that they propose, or which they claim is the main door, enters into what they call a closet on their own plans. Now, does the main entrance to a new, very expensive dwelling enter into a foyer? Or is it the side door that opens into an office? I think the answer is clear, that it goes into the foyer. This also, of course, is the conclusion that is required by the definition of what the term "main entrance" means in your city code. And as I recall, it is something to the effect that the primary entrance located on the exterior wall of a building used by residents of a dwelling unit to gain access, such an entrance is typically located on a street-facing wall. And that makes all the common sense in the world. Because who is going to walk up presumably a sidewalk, approaching your very conspicuous middle of the house along the street side, and not think that was the main entrance? It was obviously intended to be the main entrance and is still intended to be the main entrance, because we know that from the plans. They have a foyer there. It's still labeled a foyer. You don't have foyers when you enter an alley door. You do what they do here, they use it for offices. That, of course, is not the main entrance, because who wants to have an office where your business matters are scattered about, your paperwork is available for all to see it's a mess? Instead, you enter through the door into the foyer. Now, what else is going on here? Even if you somehow conclude that that east door is a side entrance and is not the main entrance, that still doesn't mean that you could build a staircase to serve it in the front setback. Why is that? That is because the code of Iowa City limits all construction in the front setback except for certain listed delineated things. Staircases are not on that list. Therefore, any staircase in the front setback, be it for the main door, a side door, a swimming pool, a window, whatever, is prohibited. Now, also, please consider the neighborhood. When you look at that neighborhood, there is one thing that you will not see, and that is a staircase or anything else for that matter, built to the point where it approaches within two or three feet of the street. The city's given you a map of what the neighborhood is like. That's on page one of my handout. And the neighboring properties have setbacks between eight feet, eight inches and 11 feet, nine inches. I believe the city calculated that the average is between nine and 10 feet, nine feet, eight inches is what I recall, and that is what they have listed as a front required setback for this property. Of course, they wish to violate that setback with the project. Now, that's important for several reasons. One, it does not fit into the character of the neighborhood, which is what the residential conservation designation is, at least to some extent, designed to do. Second of all, that creates serious safety issues. Remember, this house is next to the alley? That alley has vehicles coming in and going out of it, it's got kids on bicycles and things like that. There are going to be some slides shown to you, which will reflect that visibility, if there is a approximate nine-foot intrusion into the setback, will be blocked. It'll be blocked for vehicles coming to the south from the north on Van Buren. It'll be blocked for users of the alley who need to enter the street and won't be able to see what is coming at them on Van Buren Street. Lastly, on the issues of the neighborhood, don't you think that if it really was permitted to have front setbacks that protruded to within three feet of the street, that that's the way the other properties in that neighborhood would be built? Why is this one so far out of character with those? It's because they are trying to do something which is not permitted by city code. Lastly, we have no desire to shut down building on the project. What we are opposed to is building something too big, so big that it removes almost entirely the front setback. There is enough room on that lot to build a typically sized house or duplex, much like all the other houses in that neighborhood are built. Why are we allowing the character of the neighborhood and the safety of the neighborhood residents to be threatened, but it is not necessary for that to happen? All what we're asking is that the development be required to conform to the code. Thank you. If there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
I have a question. It was, this is the first I've heard that this is a conservation overlay. It was not my understanding.
It was not a conservation overlay.
Okay, okay. In your statement, you said that it was.
No, I believe I said it's a residential...
Am I correct? That's fine, I just want to make sure that...
Yeah, it's not a... Surrounding properties to the north are in the overlay, but this one is not in the overlay.
Okay, okay. Thanks.
My name is Bruce...
Yeah, would you sign your sign-in? Is there no sign-in sheet there?
There should be a pen, you might have taken it.
I have a pen.
There was a pen up there.
Greg, give the pen back.
Oh, the sheet got taken. Ah.
Okay.
Perfect.
The pen was present, the sign-in was not. So, my name is Bruce Ayadi. I am a homeowner and landlord in the Northside neighborhood. Keep my comments brief. I think it's clear, if someone were to stand directly in front of a house and there was only one entrance you could see, and the front is defined by the street side, the only reasonable interpretation is that that door is the main entrance. I think that's a main point. In Design for 319 North Van Buren, this de facto main entrance has a stairwell that is in clear violation of code. And this is where my interests come in. One of the purposes of this code is to main walkability in the RNS-12 neighborhood. Walkability does not just mean that it is physically possible to walk somewhere, but that is both desirable and safe to do so. The stairwell in this design is imposing, makes it undesirable to walk by, and reduces the sightlines of nearby automobiles, making it less safe to do so. Thank you for your time.
I have the slides that go with mine, and I think I'll read my piece first and then do the slides. My name is Sharon DeGra. I live, I have lived in the Northside for 20 years. I've been following the development at 319 North Van Buren Street for about a little over a year. When I understood how close the staircase is located to the sidewalk in the current design, I thought a mistake had been made. Out of disbelief and concern for safety, I checked with Bob McLeod, who has worked as a city planner and has some zoning expertise. He provided the analysis in your packet and a follow-up analysis dated April 8th, which you should have received. There is specific zoning code that covers the RNS-12, which prohibits second-story staircases in the front setback area. The building permit appears to have been issued with a small but important oversight. Now that I've had some time to read the packet for this meeting, I sense that there is an attempt to give an alternative reading to the zoning code. I hope the commission will stick with the intended purpose of the setback code, to disallow second-story staircases in front setbacks. There are no existing staircase of this kind in the front of Northside single-family homes. This appeal talks about doorways as main or principal entrances and staircases. I would like to point out that the subject is really about preserving front setbacks. What happens at 319 North Van Buren influences future development in the neighborhood. Reducing the front setback by eight or 10 feet will lead some investment property owners on a path of deferred maintenance in regard to smaller housing units. 319 North Van Buren is outside of a conservation district, but it can change future infill along the street or in other core neighborhoods, especially for lots next to alleyways. If the staircase is allowed, it will chip away at the purpose of stabilization in the RNS-12 neighborhood by taking out affordable housing stock and replacing it with new, larger homes that have three-car garages and are unaffordable for many single-family home buyers. My earliest and continuing concern for this staircase is safety. It's too close to the alley and the sidewalk. It introduces too many stress points for drivers and pedestrians, but especially for children, who often don't understand that cars can go speeding out of alleys. And no matter how careful you are as a driver, when you can't see a pedestrian until the last minute, it's very difficult to stop in time. The best resolution for this appeal would be to support Mr. Moore. Ask that the front second-story staircase be removed. Then the building can be brought back into compliance and a better fit for the neighborhood, and be a better fit for the neighborhood. After hearing everyone speak and deliberating as commissioners, I would ask that you lean to the side of causing the least harm for the residents who choose to live in this neighborhood for its charming qualities. There are mostly single-family homes, one or two stories in height, with attractive streetscapes, which include safe front yards for children to play in and space for trees, shrubs, and gardens. My husband, children, and I really love living in the Northside and would like to see it continue being a comfortable, safe place to live with good infill development. And how did, I printed out three copies.
So I provided copies to all the people here. I can also, I have the correspondence, so if the chair would like me to show the figures, I can pop it up there, too.
Okay. So this is the front facade, where it looks really clear to me again that that's a front door, where the staircase leads up to a door that's red in color. That signifies main entrance to me. It's hard to tell on the slide, but I think that the staircase starts maybe about five feet from the sidewalk, and that's pretty close. You could reach out and touch it if you're a pedestrian. I guess it's fine to go to the next slide. That's an approximate view of what it would be if you were a driver exiting the alley. And it wouldn't be easy if you're driving. If you're standing still, you might be able to get a look down there, but if, a lot of college students go back and forth in the alleyway, and it was interesting, because during a previous Board of Appeals discussion, Mr. Olivera said that there is a lot of college student driving back and forth as it being along, and I had concern during him say that. So that's a north-facing view. We're looking north. This is looking south, and it's the north facade of the building. So I think if I was, if I were a little kid riding my bike, I couldn't see if cars were about to exit the alleyway, so that gives me concern.
Thank you.
My name's Thomas Agren. I live at 512 North Van Buren Street, so really just about a block north of where this location is. I first just want to say, similar to everybody else who's spoken here, I'm not against new builds in the neighborhood. We all know, without going into it, that like this whole property has been reverse-engineered into some kind of attempted compliance. We know the design of this is a balance sheet. Be all that as a pay. The city staff last week presented and indicated to me like a degree of subjectivity around the facade definitions, and in light of that subjectivity, I'm really urging you as a neighbor of this property to look at the code with objectivity. Why do we have these setbacks? Not just, just like it's been already mentioned to you, but my own take on this. It's not just because zoning asks that we maintain facade alignment for aesthetic and community reasons related to borrowed views and the respect of the commons, but the setbacks also exist for safety reasons in neighborhoods like this. The alley that this runs along, if you have ever walked this alley, which you're about to make a verdict on the character of this alley in the future, all of the backyards have been paved over to create what I would call sort of maximum occupancy private parking lots. I live on an analogous alley on Van Buren Street, just a block north of this, and you only need to spend one day in the Northside watching these alleys to know that the overbuilt, generally overbuilt alleys of the Northside, which are actually legally wide enough to handle two lanes of traffic as they're built, serve as a sort of quasi like lawless set of secondary streets. That is a fact. The property as it's designed, to me, is at odds with the desired outcomes of our zoning code. It's a hazard to pedestrians. It obstructs views of the sidewalks, just like everybody else has mentioned. I cross this alley carrying my newborn daughter home from Mercy Hospital. My daughter will leave from Horace Mann and walk to the library in a few years. This is like part of our neighborhood. You know, the, you know, I think when we build something new, we think like, oh, I wish that things could be built for the public good first, and then afterwards for, you know, whatever the personal private needs are. And in fact, that is what we do, which is what the zoning code is. And the zoning code is written as an intention towards public good, and then it does not restrict private enterprise, thoughtful private enterprise beyond that. So I really feel like the city should, if you really are looking at what the city's own goals are for the neighborhood as illuminated, as explained via the zoning code, then you would see this as a mistake for the neighborhood, and I really urge you to ask that, when there's a new property built in the neighborhood, that it be held to the highest standards of what the code's goals and desired outcomes are for the neighborhood. I hope that you'll see that this is a mistake, and I hope that you'll ask the property owner revise the plans to create something that is safer for the neighborhood, safer for the kids in the Northside, and ultimately a more thoughtful and sensitive development for the community we live in. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Jim Throgmorton. I'm speaking to you as Chair of the Northside Neighborhood Association's Steering Committee. We support new infill development that is consistent with the goals of the comprehensive plan, the central district plan, and the RNS district. With this in mind, we in the NNA urge you to grant Dave Moore's appeal concerning the building permit for 319 North Van Buren. We do so because of the design drawing approved by city staff as a part of the building permit violates Section 14 2A D dimensional requirements of the zoning code. Subsection B1C states that minimum setback requirements are intended to, quote, "reflect the general building scale and placement of structures in the city's neighborhoods." And subsection B4D states, quote, "Stairways that function as the principal means of access to dwelling units located above the ground or first floor of a building may not extend into any required setback. The staircase providing access to the street-facing second-floor entrance of the proposed building project," no, "projects eight feet into the required 10-foot setback." Inter-April 7 memorandum, Development Services Coordinator Danielle Sitzman claims, quote, "Stairways are allowed building feature, are an allowed building feature which may extend into the required principal building setback areas," unquote, and, quote, "The stairway can extend without limit into the front setback area." In letters to the board and in oral presentations to you, supporters of Dave Moore's appeal have presented detailed objections. There's no need for me to reiterate them tonight. Suffice it to say, we in the NNA agree with their rebuttal, and we think you should as well. And on a personal note, I can say, I take no pleasure in going against the recommendations from Danielle Sitzman. I have known her for quite a while. I admire the quality of her work, but in this particular instance, she's wrong. Section B4D prohibits stairways within the setback. If you let this building permit stand, precedent will be set for subsequent buildings to follow. This will undermine the Northside neighborhood and the intent of the RNS-12 zoning district. Therefore, we urge you to grant the appeal and revoke the permit. We would be eager to work with the owner to come up with a building that contributes to a healthy balance of affordable rental and owner-occupied housing without compromising the character of the Northside neighborhood. Thank you. Appreciate your attention. Be happy to answer any questions. And I want to hand out these. Could you pass them around, please?
I will do my best. We lost our sign-in sheet again.
Is the pen still up there, just out of curiosity? Okay. Sharon. I'll need it for the record.
You will.
Yeah, great, thanks.
Does anybody else have testimony they would like to make concerning this project?
This is the first meeting I've been to, and I wasn't planning on saying anything until I saw the profile. And I didn't realize the visibility problem, that this could really generate. I live in, yeah, I can say that. I live in the house across the alley, and I've got two children, five and seven.
Who is this? Who is it?
Maybe we have your name?
Jake Vardeman.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry.
Jake Vardeman, and I live at 350 North Van Buren Street. It's just directly, I'm the neighbor, I'd be the closest house to this. And I think it's a, it's a safety issue that's gotten me up here today, because my wife and I are deathly afraid of that alley and the cars that zoom by there. And I don't know why there's not stop signs on alleys, because people act like it's lawless. They drive by their delivery trucks, college students, bicycles, motorcycles, zip through there without stopping. There's no stop sign, and so I don't know if they assume that they don't need to stop or what. And my kids know to stop and look both ways, but they're five and seven, they don't always. And when it, when it comes to an alley, they don't notice that it's... And when it, when it comes to an alley, they don't notice that it's a car throughway. They just think it's sidewalk. Now, usually when they come to a four-way intersection with stop signs, they're more cognizant of it. We're constantly still at our alley next to our house, asking them to stop and look both ways. But when I see that, I'm worried because cars don't stop and kids don't stop. And I walk to Horace Mann with them every day, twice a day, sometimes four times or more a day. And it's still an issue. And it's still something that my wife and I are petrified that they're going to get clipped, you know, by not stopping appropriately and looking both ways. And I think it's, it's just as much about them not seeing the cars coming down that alleyway as the cars not seeing them when they cross back to come to the house. So, I mean, for that reason, I wanted to say something because that will definitely be a huge obstruction to both of those parties. And on a lesser note, there's nothing better than living in a Northside neighborhood. And I plan on living there and dying there. I'm not gonna, I don't plan on moving. I've been there 23 years in that house. And there's nothing better than sitting on your porch and waving at your neighbors that when they come by and talk to them and looking down the street a little bit. And right now, I've got a really nice view to the north. And I know that, and I can't wait for a house to get there. I don't want to see a gravel parking lot there. That, that has nothing, that's nothing in my sights. I can't wait till they build something there. But that stairwell won't let me look down my, my street when I'm sitting on my porch enjoying coffee with my wife. I'll have blinders on. The hospital does T-bone me on the, on the south side. And that stairwell will put blinders on. I'll look at the two or three houses across from me, and that's about it. That's a way lesser note than the safety issue of the cars zooming by. But I thought I probably better say something.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Does anybody else have testimony to add that would give facts that we have not been taken into consideration yet? If not, I close. No, we're not. Would, do any of you have any questions that you want to ask before we close the public meeting?
I don't know if it's protocol or not, but will Ms. Sitzman have a chance to offer counter?
She'd like to, okay.
In fact, she, in fact, she does. Or the city has an option.
I'm sorry, what?
In fact, she does. The, the order of the, these events here are, we had our staff presentation at the original one, as, as is with everything. The applicant has just, I believe, concluded the applicant's kind of collective presentation.
Okay.
Now we, we will have a statement by the city arguing against the appeal if they, if they so choose, take that opportunity. As, just for procedural awareness, what we're doing, after this, there will be an opportunity for rebuttal from both sides.
Okay.
Then we will want to close the public hearing. And at that point, you'll want to have your deliberations. I'm sorry, Ms. Sitzman.
So this is my final comment?
This is, no, not, no. The board procedures, you had your, you had your staff presentation, which is just lay out the facts. The appellant has gone. You are the appellee. You're being, your decision's being appealed. And so this is, you can argue against the, why this is, you know, you, you can state your case at this point.
Sure. So I have some things I guess I would restate without making closing comments at this point. Just because of the break in our presentation.
Excuse me, I'm having trouble hearing. I'm not sure if.
Yeah.
Well, I have bad hearing anyway, but I'm just wondering.
I can turn the mic.
You turn it up.
Does that help?
I don't know. Check, check, check. Don't do that.
I heard that.
I can, I don't know if leaning in makes any difference.
That's better.
If you lean in, that'll help.
Okay. I'll try to do.
Otherwise, the audience can still hear. Okay. Most people.
It's a little soft, but.
I don't think I can turn it up anymore without that happening again.
Okay.
So.
Well, I'll try to project as well.
That's all right. Thank you.
I guess I would, just would restate from last week, the reading of the code as was presented by staff to you, the interpretation of the relevant sections. Last time, we walked you through how staff interpreted the structure of the code and how it should be read in the most relevant sections to the stairwell. I think we were accurately represented as our position is that the stairwell is a building feature that can project into that front yard setback area without limit as the way the code is currently structured. The limitations are itemized in each of the parallel sections to that. So the proper way to read the code would be that if the, there is no limitation on stairways that applies in this situation, then there is no limit on the location of the stairway. So specifically, the section of the code that lists stairways explains in what context they may not extend and where. And that specifically lists access to dwelling units above the ground floor, first floor, which we represented to you was not the case in the design of this building. So the stairway therefore had no limitation on it. I think the board did raise a question, and there has been some testimony this evening about main entrances. The question was asked, what's a main entrance? And I did not have a great answer for you last week, so I wanted to get back to you with that. We did look at the code to find where main entrance is and its definition. In short, the term main entrance is defined in the zoning code and used in standards relating to front setback area coverages, not setback encroachment limits. So it's a different section of the code than what we think applies here. The ground floor, first floor of the subject property meets the definition in the code of main entrance. Stairways are more specifically, however, regulated as building features in the standards relating to minimum setback requirements, not setback area coverage limits where that term is used. And the zoning code does not contain any more relevant design standards. So there's been discussion tonight about foias and other elements inside the building. We don't regulate the inside of people's homes. We don't have standards for specifically what kinds of rooms your entrance needs to open into. So when we looked at the floor plan, the, the area of the building accessed by the ground floor and main floor door is accessible to the rest of the building. Not every house has a foyer. I don't have a foyer in my home. But it meets the minimum design standards that are relevant to single-family homes, which are very light. And we have a lot of design standards in our code to regulate multifamily buildings, but not single-family buildings. Single-family homes are largely only regulated by the very basic standards, which is what we've been talking about tonight in a lot of ways. And I think I will leave it at that. And I'll make some comments at the end. Is there any, I don't know if it's appropriate to ask if there's clarification needed before?
You are, they can certainly ask you questions.
Sure.
You referred to the, the, because the door is on the ground level, then that can be considered the main entrance?
So stairways are only prohibited when they access floors above the main floor, ground floor. So it was important to establish which floor of this building was the main floor, ground floor. And the zoning code would determine the first floor, the lowest floor of this building to be the main floor, first floor. So the stairway is not accessing the, the main floor, first floor. It's accessing a level above that.
But the level above it has, okay, so you, you do not use the definition of what transpires in that area to describe whether it is a living area or not?
So the definition of main entrance, which isn't relevant to this, to the stairway, talks about the primary entrance used by residents to gain access to their dwelling unit, typically located in such ways. The main entrance is not a relevant term in this, in this instance. So the stairway is not accessing the main floor, ground floor of the building in the current design of the home.
Any other questions?
I don't right now.
Thank you.
Okay, so next.
All right, so that, now we would have rebuttal, if there is rebuttal. Mr. Gertis?
At the end of the day, what you need to decide is what Section 4 of the city code means. I can give you my interpretation. The city can give you its interpretation. But of course, the city cannot do your job for you. It is your responsibility and duty to make an interpretation of what that section means. Now, what does it say? It gives a list as follows. Building features permitted within required setback areas. And it gives you a list of things that you can violate the setback. So no awareness there. Does it say you can build a staircase to whatever door you want to call it in that list? It's not a complicated list. First paragraph talks about certain awnings. You can construct enclosed porches, fire escapes, stoops and wheelchair ramps. And then it says, stairways that function as the principal means of access to dwelling units located above ground or first floor of a building may not, may not extend into the required setback. As I just heard the city say, we're dealing with an entrance that opens up into a foyer that has a nice closet for the guests to put their coats on and which acts like a main entrance, acts like a main entrance, and serves like a main entrance. Call it what you want. It's a duck. It quacks. It walks. It's a duck. Don't let the city ruin a neighborhood by stretching the code to a point well past its breaking point. Just make the developer build something that complies with the code. Thank you.
Thank you. And she can rebuttal?
That would be it, yep. You're the chairperson.
Can she make a comment?
Yes, so that, I believe Mr. Gertis is representing the appellant at all. And unless there's additional rebuttal, probably not.
Unless some group, I don't know.
Okay. So now it's, would be the city's last, last chance to make a statement here.
Thank you. I appreciate your coaching for procedures here tonight. I guess the city would just say.
I think Dave actually wants to, so I think he would finish and then, as a point of order. Yep.
Excuse me. Help me sign in, you guys?
Yes, please.
Dave Moore, 425 East Davenport Street. And a nice house window looks back on that lot. It hasn't been for a long time. I just want to sum up. Can you hear me all right? Okay. Dorothy Fowles here, who owns the property at the other end of the alley, wanted me to point out that the stairs go into, on the drawings, the designs. It is, that level is called the main level. I just wanted to clarify that. I just want to touch back on, maybe real brief here. I'm just going to assume that you, you guys dug deep into the literature that was sent in by Bob Mikla. And that's where you really get into the code, as well as what Mr. Gertis has said. I just want to remind that a full-story staircase is not listed as a building feature that is permitted in the front setback anywhere. There are features that are listed as, as permitted. And it is not similar to these listed features. That's in Section A of 14 2A 4B4. Those are features that are listed, and the staircase is, is not limited to any of those things. Number three, the code lists building features that are not allowed in the setback. The full-story stairs is similar in design and scale to the prohibited features. And this is subsection 14 dash 4C dash 2, colon J, colon, the letter J, also prohibits these structures like decks and platforms from going into the front setback. These stairs obviously have, I think last, a week ago, there was a question about decks and platforms. These stairs clearly have decks on them and platforms, whether they're uncovered or covered. Number four, the code says stoops to the ground on the first floor are allowed to intrude. And this is the only place, only indication of stairs being allowed to intrude into the setback area. And finally, if, if, we, we have said, I think, especially within the writings of, of Bob Mikla, who worked at the city for, for decades. It doesn't make any difference where this is a main entrance or a secondary entrance. They're prohibited. But number five, even if one did by the building official's misreading of the code language, the door that was added, the door that was added to the alley facing side of the building after the permit was already issued, is hidden by a stairway and is not designed as a primary entrance. But again, regardless of what you call the principal means of access, there is nothing in the code that permits a full-story staircase to the second floor to intrude. So I think, you know, I applied for this, there were a lot of other people involved, but I applied because I think the building official made a mistake when issuing the permit for 319 North Van Buren Street back in February of 2002. Again, in December of 2022, when they added that doorway on the alley. And again, when renewing it in January of 2023. And then the permit should be revoked. And I want to thank you all for serving on the Board of Adjustments and, I think, as volunteers, right, right, Kirk? So thank you. And, and I want to thank you for, for hearing, all of us. Appreciate it.
Okay, is this, does anybody else who is supporting David want to speak at this time? This is your last chance.
Should have taped it down. That was my bad.
Should have chained.
I'm Dorothy Fowles. And I'm the owner of the property at the other end on Gilbert Street. It's a 150-year-old property. And we take very good care of it and really like the neighborhood and are protecting that property. There are two things, two things that I, two things I would notice on the floor plan, maybe three things. First of all, he does, the architect or builder defines the main level. And that door is three foot, six inches, which is the normal size of a main door. The door on the setback toward the alley is only three foot wide. I have tried to figure out what the height of the landing is going up to that stairs. And the best I could tell is about seven feet. So you're going to, to get to this so-called principal door that comes off the alley that doesn't face Van Buren. You're going to have, go have to go under this landing around to get to it, or you're going to come from the alley to get to it. And I noticed that on the plan, on the floor plan drawings, at the very bottom, it says seven-foot front door. That seven-foot front door is on the main level. They're calling it on the plan, the front door. My background is such that I've taught at Iowa State for 30 years in Iowa in design and have done a lot of residential floor plan work with students. And I was on the Board of Adjustments many decades ago. And I was on the Board of Adjustments many decades ago.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wants to speak in support of David's appeal? If not, then this, you may still, you may give your rebuttal.
Great, thanks, just closing remarks, I guess. The question before the board is not, do I like the design or do the neighbors like the design? Similarly, when plans were submitted to staff for review, the question was not, do staff like the design? Ultimately, the question is the same question to you that staff faced. Does, do the plans violate the zoning code? The presumption is that the words in the code must have a meaning. Their format, their construction, the way that they are laid out and how they are referenced, meant to be referenced together is the most important aspect of this. City staff did conclude that the plans do not violate the zoning code.
Now I ask if anybody has any-
Certainly, you couldn't ask if there are any questions?
Yeah. Mark or Paula, do you have any questions?
No.
I do, yeah. And this would be for Danielle. Point me, if you would, again, we're not-
Mark, can you speak in the mic, please? Thank you.
Sorry. We are not experts at all in this, you know, we're laymen, laywomen that have to find our way through this. From my reading, I don't see the word, you know, I don't see staircases allowed. I see, I see, I see verbiage that says, you know, cornices, balconies, et cetera, and similar items, but who's making the jump to include staircases in that? Because that is sort of what hinges, that, it seems to me that this whole debate hinges on that sort of leap of faith. Am I correct?
Staff's argument would be that there's a clear format to the construction of the zoning code section that's most relevant to that feature of the building. We would consider the stairway to be a building feature, to be most directly regulated by the section that references minimum setback requirements for principal buildings, the subsection that talks about which building features are permitted within the required setback area where everything else is not allowed. The code already establishes in that flow of its reading that there's an area where you may not have your principal building except for these things. And then it itemizes in A, B, C, D, and E what those things are. And the way each one of those A, B, C, D, and E is worded is it identifies the feature, and then it specifically says where and by how much they may or may not exceed. So in A, it lists awning, uncovered balconies, bay windows, belt courses, buttresses, canopies, chimneys, cornices, sills, and other similar features, and then explains where and by how much they might, may not extend. B lists enclosed porches, covered decks, covered patios, unenclosed and screened-in porches, where and by how much they may or may not exceed the setback. C lists fire escapes, and then explains where and by how much they may be, not, by how much they may not be extended. So each one of these is a little bit different, they're not exactly symmetrical to each other, but they are hitting on the same thing, list the feature and then list what may and may not happen to that. And then stairways, D. So clearly, we have determined that the thing that we're, building feature that we're all discussing is a stairway, it's the closest thing, identifiable thing that it is, and that then further explains in what, in what context they may or may not extend where. So in that section about stairways, it says what the context of them is. Its context is the function of the stairway is as the principal means of access to dwelling units located above the ground floor or first floor of the building. So the context of the stairway matters, it has to be in that context. And if it's in that context, then it may not extend into any required setback. If it's not used in that context, there's no more talk about it, so it's simply listed. If that context doesn't apply to stairwells, then there is no limit on it. That is the way staff has interpreted that section.
That's the way he's interpreted it. So here's my question, just, you know, from a layman's viewpoint, what, does that make sense to not, to prohibit this primary, this stairway to a primary access and, but allow it if it's secondary or, or essentially, you know, not necessary?
I think there's some nuance to that section, it talks about-
Well, that's my point, this whole thing is so nuanced, it just, I-
It talks about dwelling units, and in a single-family home, there is only one dwelling unit, so there are no dwelling units in the structure at all. So it's, it's standard located in a section about single-family homes, it does, is a pretty big mismatch for single-family homes, except that it's there in the code and it must have a meaning. So if we've listed stairways in things that are allowed to be in the required setback area, and the only time they're not allowed in there is when they're for units and they're the access to the principal means of access to those units above ground floor, first floor, that's a very clear context, and that's why staff's made that interpretation.
So is there a, is there a place you can point me to that says that stairways are allowed? Or is it just, is it just that it, it, the, you know, there's a stated context and everything else is allowable, is that correct?
Not every one of these, A through E, are written exactly the same, so they don't all say awnings are allowed. They say sometimes awnings and these other things are not allowed in this area, and then they would be allowed in the other areas. So it's as much what it's not saying is what it is saying. I think that it's simply being here as a listed item is, for it to have, must have meaning if it's in here, stairways is in here for a reason, and the only context it's prohibited in is when it's functioning in the context that's not, you know, is the principal means of access to dwelling units above ground floor, first floor, then de facto, they're allowed.
But does it make any sense to, again, does it make any sense, does it make any sense, you know, on the street?
That, I guess that's for the board to determine, if that's the interpretation that makes sense.
I'm surprised that the zoning code is, the zoning code is sort of, that's subjective.
Zoning codes are a living document, they are drafted and redrafted over and over again. Certain sections are amended from time to time, and it's, you know, there's not one zoning code that is written the same everywhere in the country, so.
So last question, is this applied uniformly throughout, I mean, throughout Iowa City, then?
Yes.
Has this case, has this situation ever come up before?
We had an appeal of a stairway in a front setback area, and not to my knowledge.
I see. Thank you.
Any other questions for me?
Nope, no.
So do you, do either of you have any other questions you want to ask?
Not for Danielle, thank you.
Then we close the public hearing.
That's right.
The public hearing is now closed. May I have a motion?
Madam Chair, before we, before we continue, I wanted to just take, take a moment. I understand that appeals are not the, the regular stock and trade of this board, and so, and I will enunciate to the best of my ability here. So my, my background, I'm the city attorney for North Liberty, I'm here to help out and give legal advice to the board, and I thought it'd be useful for, to just sort of state what the standard is for an appeal. What we're hearing is an appeal of a, the building official's decision. And so tonight you'll be able to affirm or reverse that decision. And so if you, once, once you begin to deliberate and have discussions about what you've heard, you'll, you'll have to have a motion saying, I believe we should, that the board should, I move that the board should affirm the decision of the building official to grant a permit or to reverse that decision. Those are your two options, are affirm or reverse. And the reason your options are affirm or reverse is that the, the granting of a building permit is a ministerial decision. It's a ministerial act, I should say. A ministerial act is one that is differentiated from a discretionary act. And so that if, if you satisfy all of the requirements for a building permit, the city does not have any discretion in whether it issues a building permit or not, I think. So if, to put it into very much layman's terms, if you put a quarter in the gumball machine, you get a gumball, right? The question here is, were, did the, did you put a quarter in the machine, or was it, oh, so it's a Canadian quarter, it didn't fit, or it's, or you didn't put it in all the way, or, or, yeah, we did, and, do they get to keep the gumball or not, is the analogy here? Was, was the law adhered to? And so I think the, the parties have done a nice job of pointing out, of directing the board to the code sections and made arguments as how you should interpret it. It is true that this is not, that the question of the character of the neighborhood is not something that enters into this particular decision. It is, it is only your job here tonight to call balls and strikes and to say, yes, this, this plan, the permit satisfies the requirements of the code or it does not. And that's, and that's going to be my, the extent of my advice for you on how to approach this. I'm happy to answer questions, but, but that's the, the ultimate question before the board is whether the decision was a correct interpretation of the code, and then you will choose to affirm or reverse based on your findings there. Is that, is that helpful? I feel like I've stunned you into, all right. If you have questions along the way, I'll be happy to answer them.
Well, let me ask you this, if I can. We're talking about contexts and, you know, verbiage and absence of verbiage.
It is true that, that when you're interpreting an ordinance or a statute, that you, the appropriate way to interpret that is to try to give meaning to every, to every word, to every word and phrase in the code. How you do that is, is up to you. What I would, what I would suggest is that when you come to a decision and you, and you want to say your, to make a motion, say why you feel that this is the correct interpretation of the code. And that's, that's all you need to do, but you, you need to have more than just a base statement, say, I move that we do affirm or reverse because I read this as saying X or I read this as saying Y. And that's, that's what you'll want to do tonight in order to have, to fulfill your obligations to review the appeal, so.
Can we make a decision with conditions?
No.
Okay.
No, because, because the issuance of a building permit is a binary choice, you don't get to change what their building permit was, right?
I understand, I understand.
So the recommendations here are affirm or reverse, and that's it. Ordinarily, the code says you may, but that's, there's no conditions that you could put here that would, in my view, make any sense. That, that would, and comply with the law.
Yes. Kirk, I don't feel well. Too late.
Okay, so have I closed the-
You have closed the public hearing.
Okay, so we can begin our discussion, who would like to start? Well, I did look at principal means of access because that, to me, is part of the reasoning on the part of the building official as to the placement of the stairwell. So I did examine that, and I also looked at the placement allowed per the zoning code. The, where the front of the building is, at least, isn't in question, I think everybody agrees on that. The building official designated the alley entrance on the ground floor, lower level, on the south building facade as the principal means of access. So to look at that, I looked first at, I looked at definitions, I did look at the history, and I looked at the design, those three things. The definitions that I looked at are all in Title 14 of the Iowa City Zoning Code, Chapter Nine, Definitions, that's 14 hyphen 9A hyphen 1. I looked at main entrance, which has already been covered. I looked at main facade. I looked at primary street frontage. Main facade is the front facade of a primary building, and we've already agreed on where the front is, that is on the east elevation. The primary street frontage is the frontage of a lot to which the address is assigned. And so the address for this property is assigned 319 on North Van Buren. So that's also on the east. A couple of words that I looked at that were not in Title 14 definitions were principal, and that's main. And I did look at foyer because I looked at the design of the building. Also looked at the history. The building plans of January 5th of 2022 showed the entrance at the front of the house on the east facade, which faces North Van Buren Street. This entrance is on the main level, which is the second story, and was accessed by a stairway. And the front entrance enters into a foyer. And the south-facing entrance on those building plans labeled lower level, ground floor, show a nine-by-eleven-and-a-half room on the lower level labeled as bedroom. So the principal means of access to the home at that time is along the east elevation, along the primary street frontage, which would be accessed by a stairway. So the revised or most current building plans that are dated March 2 of 2023 now show an access to the home on the lower level, first floor, south elevation from the alley. That opens into the area previously labeled bedroom, which is now labeled office. The front-facing east facade entry is still there with the foyer and access by the stairway. So I established those concepts as, to the change in building plans and the addition of a door that's now being called the primary access. I did look at the context in the neighborhood, and I, I went there to the neighborhood, I drove through the neighborhood, I drove down the alley, I also Googled all of the properties, and they all do conform to the front setback. So after looking at definitions, the building, the history of the building design, the design of the neighborhood, I concluded that the main floor, the second-story entrance on the east facade is the principal, primary, main means of access and not the south facade that's on the lower level, ground floor facing the alley. So although the door on the south elevation, the alley entrance may be thought of, may be used as, and may function for convenience as the principal means of access, I don't think it meets the criteria outlined in the zoning code. So then regarding the building features, I looked at the code, and we've just, many of those same building features have been brought up and we've heard about them. What's allowed are awnings, balconies, bay windows, smaller features, what I would describe as smaller features of a building. What is not permitted- What is not permitted, porches, covered decks, covered patios. So that leaves the question of stairway. There's nothing in the code specifically about stairways, so that's the main question, and I go back to the code as principal means of access dwelling, to dwelling units located above the ground or first floor may not extend into the required setback. So those were my thoughts working through this.
When I started trying to read through the zoning code, when you read the zoning code itself, it seems pretty simple, but when I started listening to what Danielle had said, and then what, what Mr. Moore had said, I went, okay, you know, Mr. Moore has his story, and Danielle has her story, and they both have a bias. But the drawings do not have a bias. They are just there. And so what I need to look at are the drawings, and what are the drawings telling me? They're telling me that the main entrance is on the second floor. Even when they made the changes, the first plan, the main entrance was obviously on the second floor. There was no entrance on the southeast, southeast corner on the ground floor. There was an entrance in the back to the garage, and then from the garage to the house, but there was no entrance there. When they decided that that was not, they would not approve that, a door was put in. But let's look at the door on the second floor, which has always stayed the same except for one, one change. In the first plan, there was a side light by that door. So there was a side light by that door. That door is three feet, six inches by seven feet tall. There was a note on every single one of the drawings that it was to be read. All those things to me say, this is the important door to this structure. When they put the first door in downstairs, it was not a red door. It was a door of the same color as the door that goes into the garage from the back of the building. What does that say to me about that door? It's a door to the house, it's a door to the, to the structure, but it is not a main door. It does not in any way, shape, or form stand out as the principal entrance to that building. I would also like to talk about what this area said. In the first, first plan, which was not approved, the area downstairs was a bedroom. Off the bedroom, there was a full bath. There is a door from that room to the stairway, which closes that off from the rest of the building. And as an office, it could be rented out, although it is a residential area. That, to me, says that, hey, this may be part of the building, but this is not a major part of the building that everyone is involved in. Let us look at the second floor, and you, and Danielle was concerned about the word foyer. Okay? When you go into that door, it is an open space. You see the whole, you see most of the second floor. Over to the right, there is a closet where people can hang clothes. That's usually, usually when you have an important entrance, you have a place where people can hang clothes, clothes by. Also, there is a half-bath with a stool and a sink. That is one of the things that is usually included with a principal door. Now, Danielle said that they deal only with the outside of the, outside of the building, but the inside of the building, to some extent, should mirror what is going on outside. The other thing is, in this one, in the, on the first floor, the, there is a door that closes that area off to the steps. On the second floor, there are no doors that close off the, the steps going upstairs or going downstairs. It is all open. So to me, that is the primary living area, and the door is the, is the major door. Therefore, they, there should not be, we should not allow a staircase from that door down to the first floor because it is the principal door.
Well, I look at my notes, and the one note that I think is pertinent here is this, that it just doesn't make any sense in terms of how a city builds itself to disallow a stairway from the ground floor, to disallow a stairway that leads from the ground floor to a primary entrance, to disallow that from intruding into the setback area. But if it's a superfluous, or secondary, or somehow, you know, serendipitous stairway, then it's allowed. I, I just, that, I mean, this may not be our purview, but I think that, you know, it goes to bigger questions, but I think that, honestly, from my perspective, that it, it all revolve, it doesn't revolve around which is primary and which is, which is not. I don't think that's the case. I think that it has to do with the fact that, that we are allowing an incidental structure, but prohibiting an integral structure. And you would think it would be the other way around. So I, I have all due respect for the city staff. I work with them extensively, and this is a tough case, and I hate to see the zoning code, zoning code revolve around issues of context and, and, you know, what we, what we would call nitpicking. But in this instance, I think that there are solutions. I can't, I can't tell them there are solutions, but in this instance, I just, I just, I can't go along with the city in this matter.
Might be appropriate to ask for a motion. Might be appropriate to ask for a motion.
May we have a motion?
Regarding APL 23-0002, I move to reverse the decision of the building official for a building permit that allows the construction of a stairway in the front setback of a single-family home at 319 North Van Buren Street.
I second.
Does he need to say why?
No. Moving second is fine, and then you can have additional discussion about that motion. Once you're done discussing, you can have a roll call vote.
Okay. You know, this is hard, but as I said, I look at the drawings, and the drawings do not have, are not biased one way or another. They are just there for us to look at. And the, and the drawings tell me that the, that the door on the second floor is the principal door, and it should, and because it says in the code that stairways that function as a principal means of access to dwelling units located above the ground or the first floor of a building may not extend into any required setback, then I cannot accept it. And if they say, and if by making the, the ground, the door on the southeast corner on the ground, the principal door, then why bother to have the door on the second floor, which is only a few feet away and up eight feet? I mean, that becomes super, that becomes an added attraction, and most developers don't want to spend any more money than they have to. This would be an added cost for him to leave it there. Why does he leave it there unless it is, in actuality, the main entrance? So I.
I, I agree, Nancy. What it does do, seems to me, is it renders this stairway superfluous and unnecessary if we have a main entrance downstairs.
Yeah, I agree.
So I, I vote to.
Roll call?
Oh, roll call? Okay.
Discussion's done?
Does anybody else have anything they want to say?
No.
Okay. Carlson?
Yes, would confirm the appeal.
Yes, I confirm the appeal.
Russo?
Wait a minute.
The, the motion, the motion was to reverse the decision of the building official. And so that would also, at the same, conversely, affirm the appeal. That's a vote, a vote in the affirmative is what she just registered, I believe.
Yeah.
Yes.
Lola?
Oh, excuse me. Swigard?
Yes.
Here's my little, yeah, your sheet. I've got too many sheets here. Oh, it's right here. Okay. This motion is declared approved. Any person desiring to appeal this decision to a court of record may do so within 30 days after this decision is filed with the city clerk's office. Thank you. At this time, are there any announcements that we need to make?
The only announcement is that our next meeting is May 10th. We will be having a presentation by council about this, the city council strategic plan. We do want to revisit the bylaws. I don't know if that'll be at May or in June. And then we also do have a case on next month's agenda as well. So I will send out the packet the week before, like I always do.
May I have a motion to adjourn?
I move re-adjourn.
Second.
Aye.
All in favor?
All in favor? Aye.